I'd like to call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commissioner meeting for February 6, 2024. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. This is a public hearings, starting with ordinances. Item 37?
Yes, sir. Item 37 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, Victoria's Pito's, planning and economic growth.
Pull that mic to you a little bit, Terry, because it's hard to hear you for some reason.
Item P37 is PDD 240001. It's an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map two dash 15 and sheet 23 from RES 9 to COM commercial on approximately 4.84 acres of real property located west of State Road 39 at the southwest intersection of Chan, southwest corner of the intersection of Chauncey Road and State Road 39, Paul S. Buckman Highway, and providing for additional text amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repeatability on effective date. This comes here with a recommendation of approval of the comprehensive plan amendment. We can do a presentation if one is desired.
So is there?
Is there an applicant for this one?
There's an applicant here on this one. Okay. Would you like to speak?
Yeah. Good afternoon. For the record, my name is Patricia Ortiz. Would you like my address?
Yes.
Okay, 2810 North Central Avenue, Tampa 33602. This petition seeks to resolve a conflict zoning. The current land use is RES 9. The zoning is commercial one. We're seeking a small-scale comprehensive map amendment to the COM future land use designation. The subject property is located, as stated, at the southwest corner of Chauncey Road and State Road 39. It is within the Zephyr Hills industrial corridor, and I can answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
All right. Ms. Waitman?
Thank you, Chairman. It's four acres. Is it tied into the larger commercial parcel?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question. The parcel is 4.?
This parcel's four acres, but is there on a dig or is it tied into an even larger footprint? My question relates to live locals, so I want to make sure that if there's a larger footprint than the four acres, that we protect this property for job-creating opportunities.
Right. It is not tied in with a larger parcel, and during the beginning of this process, staff asked us if we would be in agreement regarding a condition to not take advantage of the live local statute, and to that we agreed.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. No further questions.
But this is, this 4.84 acres is by itself, that's the only piece in this corner?
It appears that they've got residential to the south.
There's residential next to it, I know.
And to the?
And to the west.
To the west, and then Chauncey and Buckman are the other two sides, so it's isolated.
Yeah, I know the corner, but it's a standalone commercial piece on that corner?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So do we have anyone signed up for this item?
We do not.
No one signed up? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item? Seeing no one, pleasure board, move approval.
Second.
Got a motion, second, by roll call vote?
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you so much.
Move on to P38?
P38 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, January 21, 2024.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeffrey McKittrick with Community Development, Assistant Director, and I'm back to request approval of an ordinance that revises our Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to come in line with current state statute. At present, we are with 11 members on our committee. State law has allowed now eight to 11, and so we would like to go to that. And you will appoint these members by resolution. We should be bringing that back in a month, and the committee will meet biannually and submit a report to you. Currently, the ordinance is a triannual report, but state law now requires that a report be submitted every year from the advisory board. And so basically, you just look at incentives that could be used for affordable housing. It is just an advisory recommendation committee, and that is all. We're going to request approval and then appoint members, and they will begin meeting in late March and hopefully have a report to you by June of this year. And we request approval. With any other questions?
Any questions?
Nope. It's public hearings.
Okay. It is a public hearing. Does anyone sign up for this item?
No, sir.
No one signed up for the item? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item? Seeing no one? I got a motion?
Second.
And a second, by roll call vote?
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you.
Move on to item P39. These are our public hearings. Mr. Steinsteiner, will you read procedures?
Be happy to. Mr. Chairman, there are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request that the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record, these are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria for rezoning found within the board's land development code. Madam Clerk, would you like to swear the public in?
Yes, sir. If anyone is going to speak to any of the items, if you will, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Okay, thank you. Okay. P39?
P39.
P39 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, December 20, 2023.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Item P39 is PDD 247639. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Timber Ridge MPUD Master Plan Unit Development. This item, the request is to continue the item to the April 10, 2024, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City. Your agenda memo has the incorrect continuance date.
Move to continue time certain.
Second.
All in favor? Motion, seconds. All in favor?
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P40?
P40 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, December 20, 2023.
P40 is PDD 247718. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Circle K at New State Road 54 and Prospect MPUD, Stream Fruit LLC. The request is to continue the item to the March 12, 2024, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Move to continue time certain.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All those in favor, roll call vote?
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P41?
P41 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, December 20, 2023.
P41 is PDD 247760, New Clinton LLC. It's a rezoning request. The request is to actually continue the item to the March 12, 2024, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Move to continue time certain.
Second.
Got a motion, second, by roll call vote?
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P42?
P42 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 1, 2023.
P42 is PDD 247708. It's a zoning amendment in the name of St. Leo Commons VOPH MPUD, RDPD 5 or V LLC. The request is to continue the item to the March 12, 2024, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Move to continue time certain. Okay. Got a motion?
Second.
Second, by roll call vote?
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Move on to P43?
P43 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Mr. Chair, can we please move to P46?
Yes, we'll move to P46.
Okay. P46 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, December 20, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P46 is PDD 240024. It's a comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 2301 for Fletcher. This item, the item, the, there is a request to continue the item to the March 12, 2024, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Move to continue time certain.
Mr. Chairman, this was advertised for action, so we'll give the public the opportunity to speak to it. However, if they choose to speak to it today, they will not be able to speak to it on March 12.
Is anyone here to speak to this item?
We have one individual signed up, Mr. Roberto Garcia.
Would you like to speak to this item today, or would you want to wait till March 12?
He's going to come back, he said earlier.
He's coming back. Okay.
Okay, that's good. All right.
Anyone else?
I guess. Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Anyone else in the public that wishes to speak to this item? Seeing none?
Okay. Got a motion, second?
Second, the motion?
I think I cut the commissioner off after he made the motion, so it probably needs a second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Starkey. Got a motion, second, by roll call vote?
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. Do we go back to?
Pick up the rest of the consent agenda.
43?
43.
Okay. I think the advertisement was read on that one.
It was. Thank you.
It's, P43 is PDD 247655. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Clinton Avenue, MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development, CC Waller Revocable Trust. It's a rezoning from an AR agricultural residential, R2 low-density residential, and R1MH, single-family mobile home district, to an MPUD, Master Plan Unit Development district, to allow for the maximum development of 399 single-family detached units and townhomes. It comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions. I do want to mention that there were ex parte communications between the applicant's representative and all the commissioners. Those have been provided to the clerk's office, and to the extent that they may not have been, we will be providing those.
Okay. Does anyone sign up for this item?
No, sir.
No one signed up for the item? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item?
Um, I, well, I have a question.
Or excuse me, speak against this item?
Well, I don't, all I have is this one page.
It's a consent. Now, for 43?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm sorry, that's the wrong one. Wait. Sorry, that's 42. Um, can, so this is?
If you're not, if you're going to speak to it, we'll pull it off consent. It's on consent.
Is Clark here? I know. Clark, I see so many of these, I just don't remember it. Can I just get a little presentation?
I would suggest you pull it off consent.
Let me pull it off consent, we'll come back.
And move on to the next one.
So we'll pull it off over here. We'll move on to P44.
P44 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, November 22, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
P44 is PDD 247751. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Thomas J. Ambrose II and Jennifer Ray McNeil. It's for a change in zoning from an AR agricultural residential, R1 rural-density residential, and R2 low-density residential district, to an MF1 multiple-family medium-density district, to allow the development of a total of 42 townhomes with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction, which basically incorporates the requirements of PM 26 memo, which includes monotony controls, architectural standards, tree planting, et cetera. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission, who heard the item on January 4, 2024.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak against this item? Seeing no one, let it stay on consent. Move on to P45?
P45 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, December 20, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Item P45 is PDD 247761. It's a zoning amendment in the name of J. I. Verona LLC, for a change in zoning from a C2 general commercial district to an I1 light industrial park district with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction that reserves the uses to those uses in the I1 district, which is also known as the live local deed restriction. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission, who heard the item on January 4, 2024.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against this item, P45?
There's no one signed up.
No one signed up? No one here to speak against it? It remains on consent item. We move on to P47?
P47 was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, December 20, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
On item P47, which is PDD 240065, today we're asking that you approve the transmittal to Florida Commerce and other reviewing agencies. This is a comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 2310, Grace and Truth E-Lamp, providing for transmittal for the proposed comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map two dash 15 and sheet 5 from RES 1, residential one-dwelling, a gross acre, and AGI, AGR agricultural rule to COM conservation lands on approximately 318 acres of real property located north of State Road 52 and between the Centacost Parkway and US Highway 41. Again, please approve transmittal to Department of Commerce and other reviewing agencies.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak against P47?
There's no one signed up.
No one signed up? No one on the way back?
Correct.
Okay. No one to speak against. I entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Move approval.
Second. That's a great project.
I got a motion and a second, by roll call vote?
District 2 Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3 Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 4 Commissioner Bradford.
Hi, I'm sorry.
That's okay. District 5 Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District 1 Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you.
As consent items, we'll go back to P43. Ms. Starkey?
Well, I just had some, I just wanted to see that layout again, and I realize I had sent something to Clark, but it went to his office phone instead of his cell phone, so now I know why you didn't answer me my questions on this, so I apologize. I don't know how that, I don't know how that's happening.
All right. Mr. Hobby?
Mr. Chairman, Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA 109 North Brush Street, Tampa, Florida, have been sworn. Staff is pulling up our concept plan that I showed to the commissioners and ex parte meetings, but did not leave with them. I'll give you a little bit of a rundown on the project, because it's been a couple of months, just to refresh everyone's memory. So this site is on the Waller family's property. Obviously, we lost Mr. Waller recently, and it's actually directly across from where Mr., Commissioner Oakley lived for many years. Beautiful piece of property on the north side of Clinton Avenue, where the four-laning is now occurred. The whole area is RES 6 or RES 9. Most of the property directly north of the project, running all the way to 52, has been annexed into Dade City. And when we filed the project 1824 months ago, it included a substantial multifamily component. We completely retooled it with a lot of work from Florida Design Consultants and Brian Panico at DR Horton, and the plan you see here today eliminated all of the multifamily. It's only townhouses and single-family detached. It's only townhouses and single-family detached. Uh, and the density is approximately fifteen percent less than the future land use would have allowed. Other amenities that we've talked about that, you know, the plan shows you is a couple of things. We're leaving extra property on the Clinton, uh, extension, and it's an additional right-of-way for the county to bring its trail there. And as you can see, I think it's shown on the plan, and it's on the MPUD master plan. We have a twelve-foot-wide, uh, path of our own that's coming down there, a multi-use path, that will join in with the county's, uh, extension, that obviously is more regional in nature. And then there's a combination of onsite trails running around the big lake that you see there in the central feature, and a lot of on-street parking, and we have significantly more parks than the code requires on our plan. So I'm really proud of the plan. I think it's a great plan, um, and happy to answer any questions you may have about it.
So Clark, you have, um, these blocks are eight townhouse, eight townhomes in a row?
Um, I think, max, there are eight.
And they're all front-loaded?
Yes.
Is all the product in here front-loaded?
I believe so, actually. That's correct. We're front-loaded. We do, just for the commission's benefit, we didn't have to comply with the newer memo with regard to the new architectural and, and green space and stuff, because the project's been in so long, but we voluntarily agreed to comply with that. So we're meeting all those requirements, Commissioner, that you wanted last, last year.
Lot sizes. Lot sizes.
We meet everything, we, the only thing.
I know townhouses, but.
That's right.
Yeah.
Looks like they've got the, the dark orange is forty by a hundred and ten, and the whole yellow is fifty by a hundred and ten.
Right, so we meet.
Forties and fifties.
That's right. Forties and fifties in towns, that's right. But we did, again, we met all of the new memo, even though we didn't have to for everything but the side yard setbacks. So we met everything else voluntarily. Okay, so, again, I think it's a great project. It's, we, Commissioner, we discussed before, beautiful view sheds with the parks we created from the entryway. Lot of thought has gone into that with DR Horton and Brian Panico and Rob Rosner at FDC to create a very special place and have a.
So the backyards of the townhomes are gonna be fronting Clinton Avenue?
There's a big buffer in between, there'll be a wall.
See that? That's a stormwater ditch.
And on Roberts Road, the backyards of those houses are gonna be facing Roberts Road?
Those would be the back, yeah, on the, on the north side, yes. That's a, that's a dirt road, just so you know.
Yeah.
Very rural dirt, dirt road.
I gotta figure out a way to get more loaded townhomes, I just.
This is a great project, Commissioner. I mean, we've made a.
I am not a fan of front-loaded townhomes.
I know.
I think they are.
That's, that's why.
Not good for the future.
But that's why we came up with a memo last year to improve on them, so.
Yeah.
That's why we're following it. Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Clark.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else, uh, to speak to this project? Seeing no one. Pleasure to the board. WebEx? WebEx?
There's no one on WebEx, no.
No X, move approval? Yep. Got a motion?
There's two other commissioners, like, can second?
I'll second, I'll second from the, from the.
Okay, Mr. Waitman, second. All those in favor by, all those in favor by roll call vote?
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford.
Commissioner Bradford?
Aye.
District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye, motion passed five zero. Move on to P forty-eight.
Yes, sir. P forty-eight was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, January seventh, 2024, and January fourteenth, 2024.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, the real property team has received a petition to vacate platted right-of-way and alleyway filed by Tabitha Wallace and Mark Evans. The purpose of this vacation is to create one property for a homestead exemption. There were no objections to this petition, and the team recommends approval. And the petitioners here, if you have any questions.
I'm kinda a fan of alleys.
Let's go back to the map where it shows, uh, right-of-way. Um, maybe the next map. Okay.
I don't know where this is in context to anything else, but, does that, does that red mean that we've been vacating those?
That's the, yeah, that's the portion that's being requested to vacate.
Well, there, there's two red lines, so what's that mean?
There's the, northern portion is an alleyway, and the bottom portion is platted right-of-way.
Well, how is there a house built in the alleyway?
It's, yeah, it was something that was done way before. I'm unsure of how it was there.
Wait, there are multiple houses in the alleyway?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah.
Again, this is all, all paper roads and alleyways, been there for many years.
Like how, like how long?
Uh, I don't know an exact.
Come forward, come up, okay? Adduce yourself.
You need to identify yourself for the record.
Oh, sorry. Tabitha Wallace. You want my post office or my physical address?
Physical address.
Three nine three three zero Wayne Avenue. Now it's called Date City, but it is Lakouchi.
And where you sworn in?
She doesn't need to be for a vacation, but that's okay.
Okay, then never mind.
I will be if you want me to.
Don't worry about it.
Okay.
So the, the property was owned, has been owned by my grandfather in the family for, my mother is seventy, will be seventy-seven, seventy-eight this year, and she was about ten years old when my grandfather was in the service. Each month, my grandmother bought a lot of Miller's, Miller's subdivision is what this is called. And the house built there, my grandfather built, my mother put in the pool, and the other house you see there, that's the pool house in between, and the big house that I live in, and my mother lives in the pool house, and then the field, and my brother, Mark Evans, is my brother, and he lives over in the corner here. So because of the property, my mom put it in our name. She split up the field and all to him, and put the house and everything in my name. And so now I wanted to file homestead as one, and I can't, because of the road, the street and the alleyway that's never been used. If, my grandfather, remember, he grew in a garden there. Always had the, the shop, that's a big shop you see there. It's not a house there beside my house in the garage. It's never been a road, it's never been an alleyway, ever. And I am older too, so in my, in my lifetime, I'm not gonna say how. So, but it's never, it's always been our family property, and my father, and my grandfather has always maintained it, and we've maintained it. It's never been maintained by the county.
Right.
And we got permits for the pool, we got permits for the buildings. How that was.
In the alley?
In the alley, yes. And my, my stepfather, which is not with us anymore, he actually came down and did something at the property wherever you paid all that years ago. I wasn't involved in it then, but, so he come in and paid for the, get the permits and did everything, so we thought actually all that was taken care of years ago. But now that it's in my name, I'm having to pay full tax and not able to file homestead, and that's the reason I'm here today, is to try to get it all as one.
And this is in Lakouchi area, right?
It is in Lakouchi, yes, sir.
So this area where.
It is plat book two, so it's really old.
Wow.
It's been like this for a long time, and because, for sixty-four years, Lakouchi's been going backwards because of the cummerplant leaving.
Correct.
Uh, many years ago, so, uh, that's why some of this was planted this way, I suppose, but never was recognized, I guess, move forward.
I wonder if there's some cleanup we need to do in that area? I, I mean, does the county ever go in and?
Oh, yes.
Clean up?
Yes, we do.
Not make the residents hire attorneys or whatever to, I don't know what you had to do to get to this point, but.
I've been working for two years.
No, no, the county, the county doesn't go in and vacate, vacate it, vacate its right-of-ways, unless there's a request.
Well, I'm thinking that with, you know, I, I love alleys, but I see what's going on here, and we're not getting any taxable income from those alleys.
No.
And if they were in the property, wouldn't it be better for us?
Yeah, I, the, I don't know.
You've got these all over, this would be a full-team job.
Yeah, yeah, it's a big one. Look at Wayne Road. That's not, I don't, I don't even understand what's going on, whose property is Wayne Road on?
Wayne Avenue, that road you see right there is actually my property. That's part of my property goes over. If you look at the.
Right.
How each subdivision, how the, the green lines, it's, it's crazy the way they did that, uh, however many years ago, like, as you were saying, a hundred years ago, yes. So it's, it's very hard, maybe that's the reason it's never, nothing been done with it, because it is very tricks-your-mind or what have you. It's very confusing and very, probably very hard to do that, but I just wanna be able to file a homestead exemption on, on my property.
Right.
I was hoping with my brother, um, part of it, because he owns more property up this way, but because him and his wife's names on some of it, we had to actually stop where we stopped that.
So that piece along the bottom, the wider one, is that supposed to be a road?
That is a road, yes.
And it will never be a road, because you got.
Yeah.
There's a house down there building it.
There's a lot of stuff in that.
Yeah.
There's, there were, there were two more houses there from, um, some older generations that have passed, and, and one of the places my mother bought, and the house came down, and then there was another house beside my brother's house here in the corner. He lives there, him and his wife, and there was a house beside them that they, um, actually tore down whenever they purchased all that property, so it's, it's just a mess.
I assume this will not be, uh, the last time we actually see this in our redevelopment of the Lakouchi area.
Yeah.
I think this will come before more and more, that we'll find things are done like this.
I would, I would move to approve the request.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, you need, you need to have a public comment if there is any.
Yeah, is there anyone here to speak to this item?
And there's no one signed up, and no one on WebEx.
No one signed up, nobody on WebEx. So, pleasure to the board, move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second by roll call vote?
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford. District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed. Move on to P forty-nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, P forty-nine was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, December twentieth, 2023, and by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Item P forty-nine is PDD twenty-four seven seven five eight, which is a zoning amendment in the name of Carlton E. and Elise V. Ellison Trust. It's for a change in zoning from an AR agricultural residential district to a C-two general commercial district with a voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction, which, uh, there are some corrections that have been made to the record. Those have already been provided to the Clerk's office. Uh, that includes striking, um, the following in finding effect number one, the phrase maximum of one hundred and ten thousand square feet or square foot. Um, also striking in, um, the voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction, uh, the term which would include but not be limited to one hundred and ten thousand square feet of self-storage. Uh, those corrections have been made on both the agenda memo, uh, the resolution, and the deed restriction. Uh, the voluntarily agreed-upon deed restriction is to basically limit the uses to those C-two uses that generate less than fifty peak hour trips AM or PM, whichever is higher, and also to, um, provide the live local deed restriction, which is reserving those uses for, specifically for C-two uses. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and from the Planning Commission, who heard the item on January fourth, fourth, 2024.
Okay, is there anyone signed up to speak against this item?
No, sir, and not on WebEx.
Okay, no one here to speak? Is anyone in the audience wish to speak to this item? Seeing no one, move approval?
Second.
Got a, got a motion and a second. All those in favor by roll call vote?
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
Was that nay, sir?
Aye.
No, it was, it was aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. It's important. District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye, motion passed five zero. That's the end of the public hearing, and we will, uh.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, thank you. I just wanna make a comment to P forty-nine, uh, the applicant for P forty-nine, I just wanted to say, appreciate your thinking, the amount of time that you've offered, helping me on this one, and your support, so we, I know the staff is coming forward with a, with a plan on how we, how we kind of manage stores, facility moving forward, um, and I, this is, this is inappropriate of all places, fairly appropriate spot to have stores, and, you know, come back, limit it on its height, uh, and the footprint of it, and, you know, kind of, you just need right, need right by it, so this is just an example of where stores probably should go, and, uh, I just wanted to share that with the, for the applicants, so thank you, if they're here, I'd love to.
Okay, thank you. All right, have we heard anything? Ralph, do you wanna give us a report of some sort? Live local? Live local, or, or anything with legislature that might bring interest to us?
Ralph? Ralph was here, he just walked, he walked outside.
Oh, he did?
Can you see Ralph out there?
Maybe he's getting a phone call.
He might be on the phone. Things are fluid, he's checking in on some things right now.
Okay, and, just a second. So we hadn't heard of, uh, David, have you heard anything, or?
No, I was emailing Ralph. So. I, I had some initial exchange with Ralph, and based on his early read, no change at this point in time, but that there could be a late filed amendment, so he may be checking on some things, but.
Right.
That was as of, uh, two oh five, when I texted him.
Okay.
So, see if he comes back in. Here he comes.
Ralph, Ralph, this way. Oh.
It's getting close.
Hey, you all right there?
Get your paper work. We've been kind of waiting on you, kind of, we didn't know if you had something to report to us, but.
Well, y'all have been focused on live local. First, Ralph Lair, intergovernmental affairs officer. Um, right now, no amendment has been filed, but know that late filed amendments could happen, so we'll wait and see on the live local. There are other bills.
Yes.
Out there, but, um, I'm gonna concentrate on our appropriations. So going in to appropriations, House and Senate this week will vote on their appropriations bills, and as it stands, out of our four items, three have placeholders. We have the Parkway Boulevard sidewalk project, it's in the House side. Trobe Road got put in on the Senate side. The senior center got put in on the Senate side, so we're doing good. got put in on the Senate side. So we're doing good. The only one that did not get in, Sea Pines, that can be a water project.
All the water came out?
Water projects, only on the Senate side, not on the House side.
Oh.
Still have them. So that's where we're at. I could go through the other ones that impact our county. That's up to you all.
Yeah, that's your one.
All right. Briefly, there is one for Pasco Fire has a placeholder on the Senate side for radio replacement. The sheriffs has a placeholder on both sides. They got half of what they're asking for. So that's for their mental, uh, physical and emotional health center. Uh, Date City has one project in. It's basically in bringing money back for the intersection of Meridian Avenue, St. Joe Road.
Is that for the roundabout?
It's not going to be a roundabout. Now they're going to have a five-point intersection.
Intersection now.
I think they're realigning the roads.
Yeah.
Uh, New Porche has one project in play for their fire station and for their mobile library branch. San Antonio has a placeholder for their elevated water tank, which is their town center. Uh, or, uh, St. Leo, I should say. St. Leo, uh, town center has a placeholder on the Senate side. Zephyr Hills has a placeholder for their phase three septic to sewer on south side transmission. Uh, FGA got a placeholder.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
How good.
On the Senate side.
On, on the Senate side?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, how much?
Uh, right now it's seven hundred and fifty thousand. It's just a placeholder.
Okay. So you have to tell me how to help it.
Am skills, as you know, it's in both sides. There's a placeholder, well, I shouldn't say a placeholder. There's money in, written in on the Senate side for a Florida National Guard Armory. That just came up. So, uh, that's in Zephyr Hills.
Oh, Zephyr Hills.
Where that would be. So basically it's the money coming back. It was, it was, it was taken back because they haven't done anything. It's coming back to the, uh, to the city. So it's just still in play.
Yeah.
Uh, Habitat for Humanity has a placeholder for their affordable home, homeownership for Pine Ellis and Pasco. There is a placeholder in place for the US forty-one widening preliminary engineering. That's from fifty-two to the county line road.
Is that the West Bay one?
There's, um, money in play now for Kirkland Ranch land acquisition.
Oh, really? For the, uh, like an E-lamp or, uh, for conservation?
It's actually the purchase of land, so no building would be done on it. Um, there's money in play for the East Pasco Cultural Arts Facility in Zephyr Hills. There's money in play for Wilton Way Extension. There's money in play for Sunlake Boulevard. There's money in play for the Pasco pedestrian over Pasco Bridge.
Sound like Boulevard now? Because that wasn't there before, was it?
It's been in there, but they're not ours.
Oh, but I, I didn't think it got any.
It got a placeholder.
A place on the Senate or the House?
Uh, Senate, uh, for, uh, two of the projects, the Pasco pedestrians on the House side. So they're in play going into conference. PHSC Campus Nursing, um, Facility at Porter Campus got a placeholder in the House. The Academy of Spectrum Diversity, that was one that was a Burgess project, has a placeholder in the Senate. That impacts Pasco. Youth and Family Alternatives has a placeholder for their facility in the House. And the Public Historical Programs and Educational Opportunities at Zephyr Hills Museum of Military History has a placeholder on both sides. And then finally, United Way of Pasco County Transitional Housing for Survivors of Human Trafficking has a placeholder on both sides. So we have a lot of things in play that will impact Pasco County.
Remember last year, we got, I got a copy of the list of all the different places people that asked for money. And we, we really want to encourage every nonprofit, everybody to go ask.
So, so we're seeing that. We're seeing that with our municipalities, which except for Port Ritu was the only one that didn't ask.
Yeah.
Um, so they're really stepping up to the plate. It's not, you know, I think they all realize it's, you know, they just need to, you know, look and see where they can get either the state or federal dollars and not always to the county.
Yeah. Well, this is better than I, I thought it was when we were.
We are sitting pretty going into, uh, so now we'll slow down. Once they pass these out, they'll probably announce conference, probably around the time they come back from Easter, or not Easter, but, uh, in, in about a week or two, they'll probably announce conference and then go into there and finish up as they end March eighth. That's the same way with the tax package that has been brought up. That will be like the appropriations bill toward the end.
And when's the end? What's the end?
The what?
Fourth or?
Eighth.
March eighth?
March eighth. Friday, March eighth.
So what are we, um, I think we've, we've lost our, our real push that we had started because we've held up and held up. And then we had conversation with FAC instead of the Senate President's Office. So where do we stand? Should we?
We went into.
Should we go ahead and send a letter or just still be on hold and not do anything and then get a bill that we're going to have a hard time working with? What's the suggestion from?
I'm, I'm, I'm seeing an amendment filed. I don't know what the.
That's not, that was filed this morning.
That was filed this morning.
That was not, and it's not by the President's Office. And, and David's already reviewed that amendment.
I see. Thank you.
So know that it could be filed late. I think as far as the letters, it's really the pleasure of the board at this point.
David, do you want someone to speak to it?
So I think Sean's recommendation would be to be sending the letters out tomorrow because then we'll know for sure what the Senate did or didn't do.
After, after the hearing on.
After the hearing, yeah. And from a legal standpoint, whether I send them this afternoon or tomorrow morning, there's no difference.
Okay.
So I don't think there's any harm to wait to see if there's a late filed bill or late filed amendment. I mean, it is the Senate President's Office, so if anybody could probably get away with filing things late, it's probably the Senate President. So, I mean, Jennifer said she was going to file something. So I'm a little shocked that.
Well, this, this amendment is, is timestamped for today at one twenty-five.
And is that the same?
The one that I just.
The one that I just sent to.
I'm, I'm getting reports that there's amendments currently being filed as of like fifteen seconds ago. So I think.
Right.
The bottom line here is, is we need to pay attention. Um, I think we stick to the plan. The plan is, is if we don't see anything that represents what we've discussed here for, for Pasco County in this forum, especially by Wednesday, then we will, we'll make that decision. And if we need to discuss individually, we'll do that.
The letters are ready to go. I mean, and we've added email addresses and everything. So they're ready to go.
So I think, I think you should take the information we got between the chart, um, the, the verbatim you've written up as far as what they can have, uh, put into a bill, get that to our state senators and our state legis, uh, state House, House members too. And let them know we're still concerned, very concerned about this.
That's what I'm saying.
In case, in case something you're getting.
Yeah. So he's, give us a moment, uh, to review the amendment. Uh, it was just filed like two twenty-one by the sponsor of the bill. So it's going to be reviewed again on their phones. So.
Industrial was removed.
Did, did, did you get that from Sean?
No, it's online right now. It just, it just popped up.
There's a lot of language here. I apologize. I'm giving this last thing here. Um, I'm not seeing our language or anything close to our language.
David, did you see that industrial was removed? Are we looking at the same thing?
So where you, which line are you at?
Hmm, line twelve. From Osgood.
Okay. Maybe, I don't know if we're looking at the same bill. My line twelve, you're talking about floor ratio.
It's this one. He's reading that one. That's the late filed amendment on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
He was on the wrong one.
My mistake.
Okay. No, the version I'm looking at does not remove industrial, nor does it have any of the language that we talked to Jennifer about yesterday. It seems to just be slight modifications to prior things dealing with like floor ratio and height and the airport. It's, this looks to be just sort of the technical changes that Jennifer described with Mike. I don't see, I don't see our language in here.
So I'd say we go with the plan after the, it's, after it's voted on the Senate chambers tomorrow, then if we don't have the language we want, we fire it, we fire the paperwork.
So since you brought it up, so normal procedure. So tomorrow is the first, uh, time it'll be heard on the floor. Uh, and then they're scheduled for Senate on Thursday when they'll take the final vote, unless they roll it over immediately, which they could do tomorrow and pass it out of the Senate. So, so just know tomorrow they'll take up the amendments. They'll, they'll talk. They'll have debate. And then the final vote would be on Thursday morning when they're, uh, when they meet. And then I don't anticipate, and so it'll then be sent over to the House. They'll get it Friday. At this point, I don't anticipate the House moving or hearing it in a committee until possibly next week. But until they get the bill, they're not acting on the bill on their side.
So according to Sean, it's unlikely the House, the House needs to amend it. The problem on it, since this is the Senate President's bill, it's unlikely the House is going to make some changes.
I mean, let's say, any, any changes were going to be something that, that had to come from that office pretty much. Um, anything that's going to happen is going to go that way. But at least we've put it out there in front. So at least our members need to know about it. They need to make their comments however they think best to do it. But, uh, we just need them informed.
So the talking points that I put in the PowerPoint slides, either to Mike, Mike, were you?
I was. I just forwarded it to you and to Commissioner Mariano.
And I would then send it to all, I would send it to the entire delegation. Let them all, just let them all know.
Okay.
So we got nothing.
Short answer is, from what I'm reading, correct. So thank you, Ralph.
Part of that problem, we should have filed those letters sooner, but we were talking to what we thought was the President's Office.
Commissioner Simpson did ask us to quote, "stand down until."
This week.
We, you know, went to this, finished this process with this discussion with the Senate President's Office. And even the Senate President said, when this all started, said, "I have a cell phone. Let's talk about it first. If you don't like what I come up with, then go ahead and sue me." That was her quote in the paper. So now we're not suing the Senate President. I want to be clear.
Right.
She keeps saying that we threatened to sue the Senate President, but our lawsuit is against the apartment complex, is not the Senate President.
Right. I understand that.
But, um, I think we, we had a, in my opinion, it was, it was a good faith effort to go try to get the law changed. And I think we made some good suggestions. Unfortunately, Senate President didn't agree with us. So we're going to Plan D.
Yeah. Okay.
We have anything else we need to discuss today?
Well, um, let me ask you, let me see, let me see if I have this right. Sorry, I was setting off my plane. Because we're not going to meet again before this session. I mean, it's going to be.
Tomorrow.
So do we have clear direction to what we want David to do? Did you say that?
I think he does. So.
Okay. I might listen.
Yeah. So you actually gave me direction to go ahead and start the demand letter litigation process.
But Welton said to wait. So.
But, but, but we, we did wait to see if we could get any movement with legislative change. Our last hope was honestly Commissioner Simpson's discussion with the Senate President's Office. If that didn't go anywhere, which appears it isn't going anywhere, then you've already given me direction to proceed with the demand letters and the litigation.
Do you think we should touch base with Welton one more time?
I'll, I'll call him eleven oh.
Well, I was just wondering if David's.
The, the direction that I see is basically if the bill moves out of the Senate without any, without the amendment language we're looking for, we, we file, we file the demand letters.
Because it can still change on the Senate floor, right, Ralph?
Yes.
Because I thought I heard that's where the action was going to happen is on the Senate floor.
It's a higher standard, I believe. Ralph, would you explain?
I'll let Ralph speak to that. But that may be why Sean asked us to wait until the actual Senate vote.
Right.
Before we send any letters.
Okay. So possibly another amendment could be filed. It could be changed on the floor. Again, it's in the Senate. The President's in the seat. She's determined bill. So if they're going to change it, it's going to happen tomorrow. It could be another late filed or tonight, another late filed. So if you want to wait until after that procedure tomorrow for, you know, you can do that. And then they'll take the final vote more than likely on Thursday, or they could roll it over tomorrow. But today or tomorrow, it's going to be done. It's going to be voted.
You mean in the Senate, not on the Senate committee?
In, on the floor. It's going to the full floor. All forty, all forty senators will vote on it.
I think we owe Welton the respect to let him know that nothing, we don't see that anything came out in the amendment that was helpful and that this is our plan. I think we should, we need to touch with him first and then, and wait till tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah, we, we'll wait till tomorrow anyway. But I'd plan to talk to him and the others as well.
I also, um, want to get the list of the FHFC applicants. Maybe we can even go ahead and see if any have applied yet. Um, we may need our lists.
As you know, Representative Yegor was a little more successful in getting those lists.
Yeah, yeah.
Than, than we were. So my guess is if a legislator calls up and asks for the lists, if we called, we'd probably get an answer that they won't be available till Friday when, when they're done.
So I was thinking maybe we wait till Friday at five when it closes, but maybe we just go ahead and see if they can ask what time it's.
Yeah. Well, I want to be clear. If Pasco gets any more applications between now and Friday, we'd be sending demand letters to any new applications in Pasco.
Yeah.
Um, I can't speak to what other jurisdictions might do.
I mean, our best case scenario is twenty-five of them have applied in Leon County to come off. And we get more people's attention at the craziness that's going to happen.
I'm not sure Leon County would agree with you, but, but.
No, I mean for us.
Yeah. That would change a lot of things.
I, I just, you know, we're, we're so standing alone on the island right now. But we gave them a fix. They could fix that island.
Well, from what I can tell, they didn't do anything to help Gainesville either from that, from what I'm reading.
Because they were looking for some kind of student, student.
I'm not seeing any language that addresses Gainesville's concern in that.
And it wasn't only Gainesville. The Senator from Orange County spoke up about the housing around UCF.
Now, is it theoretically possible that that could be addressed in the tax bill? This, you know, the future tax package? Yes, there is still that possibility that, that they could not fix the land use side, but still fix the tax side. It seems like a remote chance, given that they didn't help us on the land use side. But is it still a possible guess?
I think by sending that demand letter out, providing we're comfortable with that with Commissioner Simpson and all, I think it might even send a message to the others instead of applying to see what plays out anyway. So it might, it might be better for us to do it, period.
Yeah. And as much as I like other jurisdictions to help us out, you know, my goal from the start of this was to protect Pasco County. And so that's why we got the demand letters. That's why we got complaints drafted against the two in Pasco County. And we're prepared to sue any of the projects that come in in Pasco County.
We did, we did have a meeting.
Maybe we'll create our own car valve.
I did have a meeting yesterday with Mr. Carvalla, David Goldstein, and David Engel with one of the live local applicants on fifty-four. And they are not going to apply for the, uh, to go from C-two to live local, but they, they have, you know, vertical mixed use requests coming in.
So I would, I would say that that's a positive of all this.
Yeah.
Is that the board's action directing us to sue any land use applicants and invoke live local has worked. A lot, a lot, we've got a lot of projects that are just like the one you talked about, Commissioner Starkey, where they were originally going to apply for live local, have backtracked and said, "We'll just go through the county's normal process." And then they then met with us to try to figure out what is the county wants to get my project approved. So I think on the land use side, we've been fairly successful in warding them off. Tax is a different story because I don't know yet because we haven't sent our demand letters yet on those two.
Well, I guess we're, I guess we're going to find out.
Yep.
So we're going to wait till tomorrow to send them and the day tomorrow.
Unless Commissioner Simpson directs us to take some other action. The Commissioner comes, Commissioner Simpson, without a due respect to Commissioner Simpson, if he asks us to stand down another day or two, I probably should honor that request.
I agree.
Well, the other, the other thing is if the, if the bill gets pulled from the Senate, basically they temporarily pass it.
Yeah.
Then we'd wait until they took action.
Yeah. Yeah. If they, for some reason, I guess that's possible, Ralph, they could table it on the Senate floor.
Stranger things happen.
Another scenario.
I feel like we're really shooting for Hail Mary at this point. But, but, um, but yes, that's a possibility too.
This is the first time in my career that they've dealt with anything like this. What, six years in school board and twelve year, eighteen years.
Yeah.
That I've been in this position.
It's really strange bills, but we see, we see bills coming toward us a lot of times, um, from state legislature that actually affect the way we can govern our own citizens and be able to do things and be able to afford the things we provide our citizens. So they, they keep nibbling away at our authority to do anything. Eventually, I guess the state will just run everything on their own. There won't be a need for a county commission or whatever because they'll run it from the state. So.
I mean, have you seen the ones coming out?
Not a very good scenario. So.
The, the one coming out on permitting approvals, I, I don't know how we're going to comply with that one.
I was going to say, I applaud you all. I was going to say, I applaud you all for being actively involved, this is, now you see how the process works. Know that, you know, things might not get changed immediately the first year, but they continuously tweak and go back, so, so we will probably be addressing this issue next year, when we can, you know, possibly get a sponsor and, and get to people that will want to have it changed. I think by then, we'll, the other local governments will see this in play. And, and this year, they'll see some people coming off their tax rolls, or large chunks coming off their tax rolls, and they're going to wake up and they're, and they're going to see. But, there are other bills moving along in the process. One, I, I am going to refer to, you know, when you said, "How do we make this up?" We're going to, you know, it's, it's forcing local governments to either change their millage or raise their taxes. But this year, the legislature has also got a bill that addresses how you all can raise your millage rate and taxes. Going forward, if this bill passed, which it looks like it will, you'll have to have a supermajority of your voting board to approve those.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say, Ralph, you, Sean, did a phenomenal job getting with us, setting up the meetings that we had, going through everything, keeping us informed every step of the way. You guys have done a phenomenal job. Mike, you, you really made a, a big step up this year to, you know, after your first time through, the second time through with this one, really, really well, even joining with Penelison Hillsborough, so I think we're representing ourselves as the best weekend. You know, Jeff and David, you guys have been great to work with, staying on top of it with great ideas, great suggestions, even going up there to testify or, let's say, discuss this, I should say. So I, I think we've done as the best weekend, and whatever happens, we just got to keep on the battle on.
So I also will say that we have a lot of silent cheerleaders. There's a lot of, there's a lot of cities and counties that, when you talk to them privately, they dis support the action we're taking. The problem is that very few of them are willing to be the tip of the spear like us.
Right.
So, this may just be one of those cases where we are the tip of the spear.
Well, you can only appreciate everything that board members do and, and our staff with our, helping our leadership to be forefront of this position, and actually, it's all of us working toward helping our citizens, so, we don't want to raise our taxes over the next few years to take care of people that get a free ride. We want people that come in and do things to actually do them based on their own services they require, so, none of us want to raise taxes on, on our citizens whatsoever, so... But I look forward to working with each and every one of you in the future to work at things that makes this kind of thing not happen, so... I think we got a lot going for Pasco County, and it seems like it's way ahead of whatever comes in second, so, I appreciate each and every one and all our staff, so...
Okay. Anything, anything else to come before the board?
I have one question for Ralph Duke. That mobility fee bill, do we need to pay, pay any attention to that, or does that not really affect us much?
It's, it's still moving, I'll be, I'm going through bills right now to, this week was the last week. If bills were not moving this week or hurt in their first committee, good thing is, is they're not going to go anywhere. So this was the week that I was really following, and I've been caught up with live local, but I'm in the back there going through all the bills to see where they're moving, so I'll have an update by the end of the week on that one.
And the second, the...
Let me just finish off.
Go ahead.
So I have looked at the, at most current draft, and it's not a model of clarity, but I don't think there's anything that's like earth-shattering, damaging to our mobility fee system in the bill.
Because we don't really have any big cities who are building roads.
It's primarily trying to deal with an issue between cities and counties, and it, it basically requires cities to collect the fees for, cities and counties to collect this, this fees for the counties, and we're supposed to address extrajurisdictional impacts in our fees, which I think we already do. It's probably a bigger issue for our cities than it is for us.
Right.
And what about the homestead exemption?
This is, this is a fight between St. Lucie County and Port St. Lucie.
Oh, that was Palm Beach Gardens.
And there, there's a similar one going on in Palm Beach County as well.
Yeah.
So our cities may have an issue if, if the way they're collecting their fees are not dealing with county impacts, but we can, our cities cooperate with us fairly well, and we're doing amendments during our local agreements with them, so I think we have a, because we have a good relationship with our cities, I think we could work it out with our cities.
And what about the homestead exemption where it goes up to a hundred thousand? Is that dead, or is that still moving? Because we'd have a double whammy with this Ad Valorem thing and, and the extended homestead exemption.
There's only, that one's not moving anywhere. They all, there's some homestead exemptions for additional for allowing the surviving spouses of, of disabled individuals to continue the homestead. Nothing major, there's, there's three that are actively moving, all right? I've already shared that with our, our budget office, so they're reviewing that now. I, I will say, one bill that, that gained traction yesterday because the governor had a press conference on it, was a new bill that came to light. I mean, Kathy Pearson was up in Tallahassee, she came back and told me about a bill that I started looking at, and that was public camping, you know, or camping in public areas addressing the homelessness. That'll be interesting to see how that one plays out, but I have a feeling that one was given blessing yesterday, and that one will pass.
But it comes with money.
Yes, it comes with money, and, and the good thing is, is it doesn't enforce, it says if, if municipal values and counties would like to house their homeless, they can do so, but with stipulations, you have to have a temporary permit from the state, they would have to have twenty-four-seven security, they would have to provide mental health care, and they'd have to have restrooms on the, on this one.
But isn't this a way to help us get some funding for the project we're trying to do over on the West Side? I mean, it sounds like that's what we're trying to do, so I feel like we should be T-DAP ready to apply with that project.
Possibility, we can look, and, and I think we will look at that, I don't know, I don't think it's going to be a large amount of money, but yeah, there's, there will be money going toward it. We've got to see how that works out as this bill develops.
Is Kathy still here?
She is.
Do you, do you think that our project, that, I think we're in negotiations, I don't know, that this, this state one would help us with funding for that?
Kathy Pearson, Assistant County Minister of Public Services. This, this bill came out of nowhere, to be honest with you. It just happened to be up in Tallahassee, and a lobbyist that represents the homeless coalitions, I happened to run into him, and that's how we found out about this, so, I didn't even know there was money attached to it, so that's a good thing, so we'll, we'll see where this goes.
Okay. I can send that out, someone sent it to me, I looked for it online, but, but William Kozier sent it to me about this bill, which reminds me, yesterday I was at the Metropolitan Industries, had an event yesterday, and so they've applied for new market tax credits, and so it's freeing up quite a few million dollars extra that they didn't think they were going to have, so they're going to be able to redo their commercial kitchen, and add like a dining room kind of feature, and they're putting back in their culinary training academy. So they're going to be teaching people how to be daycare provider, licensed daycare providers, culinary, and then we partner with them at Amskill, so it's exciting, exciting stuff for holidaying. I'll forward this to you guys.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Carvalla? That's it? All right, we adjourn.
Good luck, Jack.
Good luck. Good luck.